Do you mind if I put you on speakerphone? I'm here with the whole board. What would you rather? Okay.
Tell him we have this, Ben. Or do you want me to shut it off? Ask him?
I don't think any of this is confidential, is it? Okay, uh, we have visitors in the room, so I wanted to make sure. Uh, you're on speakerphone and, uh, there's a video camera going in the room to record our meeting, so if you think otherwise, we can have them. We can go in executive session if you need to. Uh, but, okay, so we're touching base about the events for, uh, this next couple of weeks here in town.
Correct.
What did you wanna?
Yeah.
Yep?
Well, I just wanted to make sure that you got my emails. I didn't get any feedback from them. Uh, as far as I'm concerned, um, I haven't asked everybody yet, but it looks like everybody is, uh, in agreement that, uh, events that we've had in the, in the past, the permits that we've put in place are agreed to. I haven't solidified that yet, but it looks that way. Um, yeah, if that's the case, I, I think that, um, we should be in pretty good shape. I don't know where you're at with any gathering issues or anything like that. I just wanted to make sure that, uh, the email that I sent you and the Tiki parties for each event, um, you know, we're all in communication with each other to make sure it goes smoothly.
Yeah, um, I had a chance today to catch up with our code enforcement officer because I wasn't aware, um, whether a mass gathering permit had been, uh, followed up on with, um, the proving grounds there with Mary Carol. Uh, so far to date, as of this afternoon, she hasn't submitted that yet. Um, which I know Mike here, our code enforcement officer, is going to send a follow-up email, kind of prompting her because she's supposed to submit that fourteen days before the event. If the event's the fifteen, she's kind of pushing it, you know, to come, to bring it in on Monday, uh, because the board still needs to review everything. Uh, as far as the marijuana festival, uh, my only concerns, and I was trying to go back to what we had agreed on last year, I wanted to find it in writing, was the, um, curfew times, you know, for the evening hours. Uh, what she requested seems a little bit late, and I think pretty much the board kind of thought that too. Uh, was it midnight, I think it was, on Friday, and, and one o'clock in the morning, I remember on, on Saturday, seemed a little bit late, but...
Well, again, I mean, that's a matter for the town to decide, so I'm, I'm what you think is reasonable, um, you know, as far as I'm concerned about what to hear, um, you know, whatever the community thinks is reasonable, it's fine. Um, you know, you're without a strong ordinance in the town, without, uh, you know, the regulations that governs that. How we go about what state law it is, you know, against, that it's based on community standard, really. Um, you know, I'm a member in the audit, it's whatever the town decides you wanna have, and then we'll go from there.
Yeah, we've already took, uh, the time also to alert our road commissioner, uh, to post the side of the roads like we did last year, you know, no parking, so that kind of keeps that open, so pretty much just following what we did last year as well. Uh, I don't know how many she ended up actually having last year, but it wasn't what she anticipated, I know that.
Right, so I mean, the, the, you know, the miss call we did, is it gonna grow or not grow? But I mean, if they, again, if everybody follows the rules, the regulations, and the guidelines, just it looks like right here, I don't see any big issues. It's gonna be fucked up by two issues, I mean, the, the, the mass gathering issues is with the town.
Yeah.
All the time you want people to shut down is with the town, the same thing with the Tiki Weekend, um, you know, the town. I think, I have no crush with the, the time limits work, but it's the same thing. If those are, um, all agreed upon, then I'm very comfortable with that.
Yeah, okay. All right, I just wanted to touch base with you. It sounds like things are going, and as soon as I get some information, uh, as far as anything else going on, I can definitely let you know.
Yeah, and, and I, and again, I mean, I just wanna make sure there's good communication between, you know, Wentz County State Police and the town and the event holders, so that we can have a safe event and everybody understands, you know, what your guidelines are to assure this event.
Yeah, yeah. Did you guys have any questions?
No.
Well, whole board's all set. I appreciate your time.
Yeah.
All right, have a good night.
Yeah, you too. Thank you.
Yeah, bye-bye.
Bye.
I haven't heard anything on the radar about Tiki Weekend. I just know it always comes up on Labor Day weekend over at Skydive, but I haven't heard of, well, that's Mike about that one too. I don't know if there's been an application yet.
I have a question. Is anyone, uh, going to represent the town at the, uh, gully oven rededication other than the conservation committee? Will any of us like me be attending that?
I won't be. I don't know if you guys are.
I don't even know when it is.
August ninth.
August ninth?
Yes.
I'm not sure. Nine twelve, so I think.
Sunday.
It's on a Sunday.
Mr. Nada, something you're interested in? They're gonna have some music. There's some, uh, string music from what I understand, right? Oh, I thought you said the four H Clover.
The four H Clover, yeah, but I don't know, I don't know what they're going to do. I'm not sure.
Oh, 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 very vague. Nothing you're interested in, Mr. Nada?
I don't know.
So, the rededication for the gully oven, you know, the town park there? We just, or now maybe one of the board members might be interested in going and kind of representing the board.
Hi, Mike, are you waiting to get in here?
Sure, can I slide in?
Well, have you got, is Mandy supposed to come in with you?
Yes, that's on other stuff. I have, uh, I just wanna throw you my.
Make one.
My goal report.
Can't see the word.
Got questions too about the, uh, a couple of different events. We just got off the phone with Sasha Shapiro and.
Okay, you did. Okay, that's great.
Yeah. Spoke to him about the marijuana festival.
Yeah.
Um, end times, curfew times, to me is kind of late. I think we kind of said that already, you and I have talked about, we've talked about it.
Yeah.
Uh, I can't find anything that shows what we did last year except for on Sunday. So, I'll, I'll keep digging. I'm pretty sure there was a conversation about that.
Okay.
One o'clock in the morning seems pretty late. I know there was a lot of residents in the area right there that weren't too happy last year that it was eve, you know. So, I wanna kind of make everybody happy.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think within reason, ten o'clock is a good hour to end that, to tell you the truth.
Uh, best you can. Yeah, well, I'm thinking even like campground things like.
That's old timers anyway.
I'll go to campgrounds and things like, curfew times eleven, so again, that's funny.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, but, wanna stay consistent best we can. Uh, have you?
We'll pass that, we'll pass it out to Mandy. We'll make sure that gets in print as well.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, mass gathering application for Tiki Weekend for Skydive, you seen that yet?
Nope, nope.
Sounds like Shapiro's having some, um, conversations with them over there already, so I'm not sure, but.
Okay, yeah. Okay, we'll be seeing that come down the road, okay.
And did you email Mary Carol?
I haven't.
She's gonna run out of time.
In fact, when I, I'll make a note to myself right now, as soon as I get out of this meeting.
It's two, right?
I will do that. Just throw an email and say, babe, where we at?
Two o'clock. Yeah, okay.
Okay, so, just on my, on my behalf, my, uh, let's see, um, working on a plan to track permits. Don't know how long some of them permits have been out there. Like his, his one, Mike Pedro, I don't know when he's ever gonna start, but we have no way to track him, and I, the board is a good way. I bought an erasable board. Um, just hate to see something up there for two years, you know? Two years is a long time for a permit to be open, so. Anyway, way to track that, expiration, the inspections, uh, the finals, finals getting them so we can get them back on the tax books, okay? Uh, number two, uh, we had talked about this briefly, my office hours and inspection times. It says on the door out front, uh, it says my office hours. That really doesn't explain. Uh, what I wanna do is I'm gonna write up a new sheet where it says, I'll be in the office this amount of hours, like, uh, Monday and Tuesday it's seven to twelve. And then it should explain that I'm available for inspections from twelve to five, by appointment only. Uh, it makes it easier on, not only the contractor's side, but on my side. You can't have, you know, four inspections at two o'clock. So, uh, also with the new building, uh, applications, permit applications, it will give a list of what we expect for inspections. Uh, don't accept pitches, pitches don't. You could be taking a picture of that foundation over there and he's pouring it over here. It's not that I don't trust him, I just don't trust anybody. So, uh, uh, they'll, I, it's gonna take a little bit of time to get this process rolling, but once they get rolling, I think it'll be a smooth, easy transition for everybody.
I've got a question.
Sure.
If you don't mind, if I step you back a little bit.
Sure, go ahead.
Is there any kind of time limit that anybody in this room knows of on these ter, on these permits?
It's two years.
Before they expire?
Two years.
I thought it was two years.
Yeah, it's just two years.
All right.
Yeah, it's two years, yeah.
Wasn't clear on it.
Yeah.
Which is, which is a long time, cause you get two years to start and then, uh.
It's a long time to have one open like that.
And then how long to keep going, you know, you reapply, I suppose, at that point, right?
Yep, you can. Yep, there's another fee associated with that, uh, and the.
Is that a state mandate or something?
No, it's local.
Okay.
So you, if you needed to, you could change that.
I got changed, well, not too far back, cause I had one year when I did my house, and I'm trying to think when I did my garage, I think it was.
Typically, it's one year with either the surrounding towns are doing it one year.
So, the last ten, fifteen years, I got changed somewhere there. I don't know exactly where, but.
I wonder if that's something we should be looking at as a board?
Be interested to see what other towns are doing too, because, you know, I, I'm just brainstorming, I have no idea. But what if it was six months to get, you know, to get started on your, in your foundation, stuff like that? And then certain amount of time for each section of the building, you know, or something.
Yeah. Yeah, or, or, yeah, you're right, to see if any, there's any activity.
Yeah.
Uh, if you see activity, it could be, uh, you know, as much as a year or up to two years, depending on the activity. You get a person who's building a house almost by himself, there's no way you can do it in a year. I know, I did it.
Yeah. Very, very, yeah.
And you know that, you know, you, you gotta work, come home. It's not building a house, it's a house. So, okay, uh, between building and, uh, plumbing permits, we took in four thousand six hundred seventy-eight dollars this month.
Good.
Okay, so.
Good.
Yeah, uh, the rest of the inspections are just, uh, second and third inspections, uh, other than that. Uh, we're not doing too bad, we're keeping up with that.
How many new buildings does that represent?
That represents eight.
Eight?
Yeah, and I just got done talking with, uh, Rockwell, Rockwell Homes Superintendent. He's looking at about thirty homes this year.
In Lebanon?
In Lebanon, yeah. And they're just not in Lebanon, they're in the surrounding towns too. So, just in Lebanon, the Great Brook, they're ready to break open, and they're doing, they got three more to do over there. He explained to me of, or he spoke where they were of it. Uh, uh, he's got six more right now, and Jeff did another.
Are you keeping the list, um, whether separate or whether you can just draw it from what you, what you're already doing? Uh, projects that are going on this year. In other words, if he's got thirty homes, we're gonna do.
Yeah.
Uh, we're gonna need that for assessing, the assessing side of it.
Right, and that's, remember we had talked about that, the way to me, to give that to you is when it's all, when he gets his occupancy permit. Now he's back on the book.
Technically not, because even if he's not, there's nobody living there yet, whatever's there April first, we get to assess. You know, if it's only a foundation only.
Okay, yeah, 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 I see, yeah, true, too. I remember that, yeah. So, we're gonna have to work up assistance for that, and, yeah. We can incorporate that into the report.
Okay. Yeah, we'll figure something out.
Okay. So, that brings me to my right-hand gal.
Yeah.
Hello.
Uh, she's, we're doing, oh my God, she's doing a fantastic job.
Thank you, Mike.
And, uh, we had been talking about, better paperwork. One, like, the mass gatherings. So, I'll, I'll give you the floor now, Mandy.
Um, so you all noticed you all had a little packet with your name highlighted. You're welcome. Sorry, Paul.
Personalized.
Um, I just gave Deb my packet, so.
Oh, do you wanna use it?
No, no, I've got it all in my computer. And I'm, I'm kind of swaying away. You know that there were a couple of things that I was trying to do, one of which being switching all the fees that are in our ordinances currently onto a schedule so that we can reevaluate that, um, so you got all those amendments, and you also know that I'm trying to license businesses that are currently not licensed at the town level. So, those are all the ordinances that you have been given, and I think I've given each of you, like, six. There's three, well, there's two here plus an application. And that's in addition to what I've given you in the past. What I am now thinking, and I spoke with MMA, um, because you can understand how that many ordinances just all over the place would be hard to kind of keep control of. I mean, you must understand, me having thrown six at you so far, you're sifting through, like, which one are we talking about? What I've spoke with MMA about a good way to handle having everything more organized and easier for code enforcement to find when he's licensing these people, and easy for you to find as the licensing board, um, when code enforcement's talking to you, is just one business licensing ordinance. I have an example, it's pretty thick, so I will just leave the one copy for you, you know, I don't like to waste paper. But I really like the way this is laid out. It keeps all of our business licensing ordinances into just one. It has a nice, pretty table of contents. It tells you if you're looking for what license, you know, where you're gonna find it, what the requirements are. Um, so I will give this to you as opposed to the six that I've passed to you, maybe just having it all in one decent-sized one. Um, the other thing that Mike and I were talking about is the event application for your mass gathering, um, which you all have a copy of, if you wanna just kind of take a look at what I'm talking about there.
The fees are broken down, uh.
No, that's okay.
Do you wanna use this one, Ben? Use this one.
That's right, yeah, thanks.
The, the second page, the second little packet.
Oh, this one, right here.
Pretending to follow along with you.
Pretend.
It got shuffled in paperwork earlier.
Mandy, I'd like to have a copy of the whole thing for myself, if you don't mind.
Okay, yeah, no, I don't mind at all.
No, go ahead, Paul.
Sure, I'll print you one. It just basically, and of course I will print you one. But to explain it better, it just basically organizes everything that I've given you and keeps it all into one place. That's really essentially all that that one ordinance does, which makes everybody's life easier.
It kind of covers all the different met gatherings, events that we would have in town, and it's a checklist.
Exactly.
And the fee schedule is, is, is operated the same way a checklist, so they can charge appropriately. So, it's not a, it's not a jumbling or gambling game or a crapshoot, but what we're trying to drive, that it's all down a black and white.
It breaks it down, and that's the mass gathering application, the second page, which I thought we could use this, which you have in here, yeah, I think it's your second one. Yeah, this one.
This one, this one, Paul.
Here, I'll show you. This one. Um, it breaks everything down for you, so you've got one too, I think. These fees, we would need to discuss, these are not the fees that I'm proposing, that's why I've highlighted them in yellow.
Just examples.
Um, but the rest of the application, it, it makes everything so easy, how many toilets, I mean, you can see how nicely it breaks it down, and Mike likes that, which is nice. You have neighbor notification, um, so that's gonna go for all of your outdoor events, whether it's a mass gathering event, whether it's fee-related or not, um, it should still be permitted, and this is gonna tell you all the rules that you need to follow, just break it right down, super simple for you, so you don't have to wonder what you need.
We're also discussing, uh, the number of, the number of people at, at an event. Right now, we're doing what, it's five hundred, Mandy?
It's five hundred for five hours.
We wanna do two hundred and fifty. Two hundred and fifty, still a lot of people in one place for five hours.
It is, and I know, in the past, it had been mentioned to me that they had tried to go to four or three hundred. Um, I think four is still too high, but I'd be willing, I don't know if you would be, three hundred is reasonable, if you don't wanna go all the way to two fifty, but I really wouldn't go any higher than that, because it's a lot of people in one place. And it's, it's something to be of concern. The other.
You've rolled that, you've rolled that into here?
The.
Business license ordinance?
The business licensing ordinance would incorporate all of the ordinances that I've given you so far. This, events and outdoor festivals being one of them. So, the events and outdoor festivals, I've sat at two fifty.
So, what I'm, what I'm gonna just say is that's, in the past, recent past, been very, very hot topic in town. So, if you roll that one item there into this whole package, the whole package could fail because of that one item.
Right.
Just something to think about.
What I think is, my proposal for licensing businesses is one part cost, which is to say that, eh, these businesses, every single one of them, I don't care how big you are, you're using code, code enforcement, you're using fire and EMS, you're using our roads, you're using our town's workers' time, and all of that should be compensated to a reasonable amount for each business, because if not, that rolls into the cost for the rest of the town. So, one part is the costs. These businesses should be covering their own costs. The second part is, by not business, by not licensing these businesses at the town level, we have no town recourse. We can't protect our residents at the town level. Right now, all that is required is state licensing, and so if something were to happen, all we could do was call the state police. That's all we have.
That discussion with the business licensing, I would probably abstain from and step down from.
Yes.
Cause I'm a small business owner, which will put me in the public seat, so then I can speak on that behalf. Because, I mean, I, I think honestly, if I was to speak openly right now, is that you'd have to determine the size of the businesses it's gonna affect, i- is this gonna affect everybody? I know from what little I do doesn't affect the town. You know, you could argue transfer station, that's about it, but, you know, then I know what the towns tried to put, waste management, we had to do, you know, your own dump bins at one point, you know, that was something that was being talked about. But when you figure out the taxes that I as an individual pay, my parents as an individual pay, which is where the shop is associate, you know, we pay plenty of taxes to cover what? Bag every two weeks that goes over to the transfer station from the, from the business.
Right.
You know, I don't generate that much, uh, so I guess that's where I'd be at.
But part of the high tax, part of the high tax for the whole town is covering those costs.
I know it's other businesses, yeah.
Right, so, you, you may be even paying more than your fair share in personal property tax, partly because of that, because of the fact that we don't license them now.
So, it's, you know, typically, not typically, on the other side of the water, they, they, they have zoning. So, businesses typically go into an industrial, commercial zoning area, and it, you know, they're, they're taxed, which is different than a residential, but we don't have that here, and that's where she's going with that.
Yeah, so it's a start to getting things together. It's a start to getting things on the right track.
I think you're talking about stuff that needs to go before the people.
Absolutely. It all has to go on a ballot, but I'm talking to you about allowing it.
Yeah.
And evidence, evidence, evidence in the past.
On a ballot.
If you say zoning. They're not too happy.
Are you gonna be a while?
I just, can I, I'll be excused?
Sure.
Just two people waiting.
Okay, thank you.
Everything that I propose most definitely has to go to a vote to the people. Um, I would like to have this go onto the ballot so that we have the opportunity to allow the people to speak on it.
So, if we put it on the ballot, I'm gonna say it's gonna be rather lengthy if we cut, if we discuss it fairly in front of the people.
And I would prefer to do that, and I would like to put notice upon notice upon notice about this public hearing,
Absolutely.
Gonna have to do.
Because I wanna make sure I drag as many people to it as I can.
Well, it's the, the note, the proposal thems, itself is gonna be lengthy, and I got a feeling we may have a hard, you might have a hard time selling that.
Now, I can, if you think it's in the best interest, put all of these individual ordinances on the ballot as I have been giving them to you, as opposed to putting them in this one ordinance, if you're concerned that maybe this one ordinance would fail for the sake of, you know, one thing and the rest maybe would have been accepted. I can certainly keep doing it the way that I've been doing it and just do them individually. I still, for the most part, would like to address it to the people, um, and, until they start asking questions about specific things, which obviously I would answer, but as far as my proposal is licensing businesses and events as a whole.
I know personally as a voter, I would not vote on anything like this if I couldn't see the whole thing written on the ballot, complete.
Oh, absolutely, you.
Not just reference to this or reference to that.
Legally, it would.
Because that's just, to wit, to me, that would be just trying to push something over on folks that they shouldn't have pushed over on them.
Legally. Right. Which is why you send ample and repetitive redundant notice to get them out to the public hearing, because the public hearing is where it's all discussed. Secondly, legally, all I can put on a ballot for an ordinance, it must read, shall an ordinance entitled this be enacted, period? That is legally all I can put on a ballot, so you have to come to the public hearing to, to know about what ordinance you're voting on.
Okay.
You know why we don't have a comprehensive plan? Because there was too much on the first ballot.
Yeah.
Right, Ben?
Well, that was before my time.
Yeah, and I just think the real point is to, to get as many people to come to these public hearings as you can and to explain everything that they need explained to them. That's the only way you're gonna get through to these people. You really need to make them understand what they're reading on the ballot, and you really need to make sure as much as you can that they're gonna come to the public hearing to understand. That's my role, and I would go above and beyond what is legally required to post notice because I want them to come to this hearing.
There's been many, many proposals, I believe, in Lebanon, Maine, about things like this.
But how many people came to the public hearing?
Well, well, ten proposals.
There'll be sixty people there.
The people will speak.
There'll be sixty people.
Well, that's the point, though. People, the people need the right to speak, you know?
That's right.
So, the question comes up, do we three have the authority to not put it in front of them? Not really.
Right.
You know, so. But, um, a question for you. And, and, well, you may not even know, I may have to throw it in front of legal.
I can do that, though.
But if we broke this down into individual ones.
Which I have been doing for you.
And then, as an additional question for whatever ones pass, do you authorize putting this into a?
I can ask.
You know, that, that question then would be, let's say one didn't pass, but what do you get, six, five did?
And we would put it in.
Then that would go together, isn't it?
Right, and then anything additional would almost be like an amendment, an article addition.
Yeah. Yeah.
And that way we could still keep it organized. I can ask MMA, if that's a question I can pose to the people, or if it has to be written.
Yeah. Yeah, if it has to be one or the other.
Right.
I would guess not, as long as it's explained.
I, right, as long as it's clear, I would assume.
But, yeah.
But, you know, I'll ask before I assume.
I would like to have a copy of this too in full.
Okay, and some of these.
This is an example, you know, that, this York Maine.
Well, that's true, I can go, I can get online, you're right, you're right, yeah.
It's just an example. I mean, I just wanted to have something to show you guys. Those are not all the ordinances.
Yeah, I don't need them. I can look it up online, yeah, okay.
I mean, the only ones that I have proposed to you are the ones that you have copied.
If you get one pulled together, I definitely want that one, I don't guess.
Absolutely, and I'll, all I would do was basically combine everything I've already given you
Yeah.
And just give it sections, you know, table of contents.
Yeah. Yeah.
Organize it, cause I love organization.
Yeah.
Do. So, as far as, and I know that Mike was extremely excited about that mass gathering, um, application. Now, that is not something that I'm amending in any way, that's not something that the people need to vote on because the ordinance has already been passed. The application is the only thing we're changing, um. And I know that he really likes that application because it just explains everything to them, so if you. So if you guys could look over that, scribble what you don't like, what you do like, tell me how to get that to him, I know he would appreciate that.
I think that needs to be checked on though too, cause you had a fee on there, right?
Well, that's why I highlighted that, cause that's not what I'm proposing, um. Right now, I think, you know, mass gathering by application only.
So the next question I would have, and I can ask, if you can ask MMA, that's a good first step. Then I can take it to Bernstein, sure, if we have to, but, uh, if, if an ordinance was passed without a fee structure, can we put one on, does the select board have the authority to put one on? Or does it have to be passed through as another separate ordinance with a fee on it?
Right, as like or an amendment, right, right. Okay.
Yeah, need to start there.
So there's two things. That I need to.
An open charge-out fee for these per day.
We are.
Yeah.
And I'll dig out the copy of the, uh, former mass gathering proposals we've done in the last couple of years here.
Okay.
And I wanna copy, I wanna copy, it's just, everything comes from the MMA on this too.
Okay, I, I, I always present everything I get from MMA to everyone.
I wanna hear about it three weeks down the road, I want a chance to look at one too.
No, everything that I get, I bring with me to the next meeting, always.
Go.
Um, so the mass gathering, and we wanted to talk about how I can structure that one about.
Can I get my papers back, I, that's not it, somebody took them.
I have.
He might have on accident.
Is your revised marriage?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, those ones are mine, cause they don't say Paul on them.
I'm excited about this.
Paperwork thief, this is all mine.
Good.
This yours?
It's all mine, give it up.
If, once you get to the second copy.
Yeah, after that one, the rest is yours.
Yep.
Yep, there you go.
Separate ordinance.
Lightened your load a little bit there. Yours was in your box somewhere. Copies of that was in your box this morning.
Probably in someplace else.
Okay, and another thing, just really quickly, um, before I go help Seo, I would like to, um, when can we get together in an executive session to discuss applications for my position?
Did you say you wanted to keep them posted for another week, though?
I am gonna keep them for another week.
We're gonna still discuss what we have.
But we can still discuss what we have, maybe next, see, I hate to do it on a Thursday, but I'm not ready to do it as early as Monday, so we'll have to.
I would just not, I would.
Not next Thursday, just during his birthday.
Oh, you want me to, okay. So we'll do it the following week, which will, which is.
Now, I was, I messed up, I had this written wrong, it's not here, it's going on next week, it's coming through.
How many do you have?
Right, so, and.
How many applications?
You're gone this week, right here.
Yeah.
Good, because that's my lean week, so I don't really wanna do anything that weekend.
Okay.
So we'll do it on the thirteenth.
Alright.
If that's okay.
How many do you have?
I don't know, seven to ten right now.
Oh, you do, alright, okay.
Oh.
We get, we get, all we got here is silverware, but.
They've been, we didn't hear anything for like a week.
Yep.
And then we just got flooded.
Definitely worth discussing, okay.
Nice, good for you.
What's gonna be a good time?
And especially by the thirteenth, we'll probably get a few more.
What's gonna be a good time to get you in here on a busy Thursday night?
Well, if we have all of the staff, I can come in.
It shouldn't be bad in the middle of the morning.
Right now, we got nobody signed out for that day.
Right, minimum, true.
What's that?
Yeah, so just.
No, right now, we've got no one signed out for that day for vacations or anything.
Just put me anywhere.
For four thirty.
Four thirty?
What?
Just put me anywhere, yeah, four thirty's good.
And that's inked in too, we didn't mess with that.
Cool, so if you just put applications for Seo, cause she'll, um, she'll wanna put that on the agenda.
Can I, public participation time? Please?
One minute.
One minute.
One minute, okay, Manny, first thing I wanna tell you, thank you for doing all this hard work.
Yeah. Thank you.
Because you have gone above and beyond in your research and, and things that should have happened in town here a long time ago, as far as I'm concerned. The, the second thing that I wanna say is that, don't let the snickers and giggles get you down, because this is needed in our town. Licensing is a way of life.
One minute's up.
No, it isn't, don't be rude. Licensing is a way of life, and it, especially for a town that, um, that deals with outside law enforcement. So this gives law enforcement a way to, to know ahead of time that these things are coming up. And it also gives our fire and EMS who rely on mutual aid and stuff like that, a heads up on how many people are gonna be here, I mean, it, I just think it's a, I just think you're doing a wonderful job, and I wanted to, that's all I wanted to say, and I'm sorry that I was interrupted.
I appreciate that, though. Thank you. No, that was nice, so good, sorry, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Manny.
Alright, gentlemen, I will see you soon.
Thanks, Manny.
Oh, are you gonna just stick those in my box when you're done? Cause they gotta go to dinner first.
Right, they go to dinner first, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody opposed to me delivering that right now?
Nope, alright, yeah, go ahead.
What's next on the agenda?
I'm gonna ask, the other two, I'm gonna ask if the other two have anything else. I'm, I'm just working on waterfront assessments, it's mathematical calculations, so, I mean, it's just a lot of calculations, other than that, I, I don't know if you have anything but a last voice too.
Can I say something on the record, you knew I had to, listen, don't laugh at her when, not you so much, but really, don't laugh at her and say Lebanon always, Lebanon always, Lebanon now has seven thousand people.
What are you talking about?
And you don't know that Lebanon always. Well, you say, you know, Lebanon won't ever pass, oh Lebanon, you don't know that, Lebanon has seven thousand people now. And we have businesses that are popping up here that we, we come in here and ask you folks, what's this business going in on Upper Guinea Road? You think it's pigs, he thinks it's storage, I've heard it's greenhouses. If we had a business licensing process here in town, we would all know what that building is going in on Upper Guinea Road.
Well, I did ask the code enforcement officer, he told me it was storage.
Right.
What can I go buy?
If we had a licensing process, is what I'm saying to you, Paul, it would be on the license application.
It's supposed to be on the application, right?
Right, but we don't have a business licensing or permitting, on the building application.
Yeah, but it's supposed to be on the application.
But once it's built, they can use it, once it's, well, let me finish talking to you before you dismiss me, this is, I asked for permission. What I'm saying to you is, once a building is built, it can be sold numerous times for many different businesses. So the original intention of the bu, of the building may not be what it is ten years from now. So if we had a business licensing proposal in town, every new person that purchased that building that wanted to open it as a separate business, the town would know what was going on in that business, do you hear what I'm saying?
He is, he is.
So, yes, I understand that Lebanon has changed, and it bothers a lot of people that it's changed. But it has changed, and you can't go backwards. So all I'm saying to you, don't frustrate her by saying, well, Lebanon always, Lebanon will never, Lebanon will never, you have five thousand.
I didn't say anything.
You, both of you did, I can show you the video.
I didn't say anything.
I can show you the video, you both did. And what I'm saying to you is, don't just discount that, because you have five thousand more people in Lebanon than you had three years ago. So you don't know what the Lebanon people are gonna vote for in November or June, you don't know.
I move with calls and meeting. Second.
You didn't ask me if I was finished. You can't close the meeting in the middle of me talking, that's like horrible.
Forty-five.
That's alright, I was done, I was done, anyway, well, I wasn't talking to you anyway, I was talking to Mr. Netto, so. I didn't get my time for public participation.
I love it.
I'm just like marking my, my objection.
Festival committee, is that six o'clock, so that's.
Yes, that's right.